Yeah, very good. Uh, calling to order the Wednesday, March twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four meeting of the Castro Valley Unified School District meeting of the Board of Education. I need to get approval of our agenda.
I'll move approval of our agenda.
I hear a one.
It amended?
Amended.
As amended.
Can you just let us know how it's amended?
Yes, it's amended. Pen B is amended. The date was incorrect.
Thank you for your due diligence there.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
We have a one and a two. Let's vote.
Yes.
Trusty Whitaker?
Yes.
Trusty Howard?
Yes.
Um, and I am a yes. That is four zero. Yes. Um, Ms. Kayer, have we any public comments regarding closed session items? Okay, with that being said, we shall recess to closed session.
Howdy, everyone. We are back to the Castle Valley Unified School District Meeting of the Board of Education for Wednesday, March 27, 2024. We actually have three items to report on that we took action upon in closed session. I will report out on the first one. The board took action to approve the appointment of Ms. Yoko Ostriker. Is she here? Oh, okay. She's okay. Well, that's well, she'll be here next week. Okay, sorry. As Assistant Special Education Director, point five, and Special Education Local Plan Area, SLPA Director, point five, with a vote of five to zero, Trustee Whitaker with a first motion, and Trustee Adams with a second motion. We also took action on two other items. Agenda two A, Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuing to Paragraph Two of subdivision subdivision D of Section 54956.9, One Case Relating to a Construction Contractor Dispute. In closed session on a motion by Trustee Raymond and seconded by Trustee Whitaker, the board voted five to zero to approve the settlement agreement related to a Construction Contractor Dispute. Agenda two point B, Potential Litigation Per Government Code 54956.9 subdivision B to A. The board will review the facts and circumstances that might result in litigation and take action regarding claim. File number 635641, in closed session on a motion by Trustee Whitaker and seconded by Trustee Howard, the board voted five to zero to reject claim 635641 against the district. So those are the actions that we did take in closed session. Let us go on to Trustee Whitaker, who will be reading our mission statement. And before you read, I always like to point out our strategic directions, which embrace the values of this mission statement.
Thank you, President Kuziak. We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all of our students feel respected and supportive to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you very much. Now I'm going to read about public comment instructions. It's a very, it's a lot of words, and I will say them now. "The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a Request to Speak Blue Form on the back table or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. We do this to help accommodate all the speakers we have out there who might want to speak up. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment, but we cannot discuss or take action on the issues presented. So we hear you, but we're not going to respond to you." And with that, we are going to move on to item four, School Report and Recognitions. And I'm so excited to have our friends from Alma State Preschool.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Tomita, Principal at Alma State Preschool, and very happy to be here tonight. I'm going to be serving kind of as Vanna just forwarding the slides because our teacher, Lilia Fregoso, is going to be presenting tonight about our school garden.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to share with you. This year, I decided to grow a garden with our preschoolers. I wanted to create something that would be impactful for them as far as trying new fruits and vegetables, as many of them did do not like them. And the years that I've been there, I can't get them to eat them. So here starts our slideshow, so you can start seeing. So this is our garden, and our garden is growing. And by the way, they did put all the dirt, and they planted all the plants themselves, and they learned to tend the garden and take care of it, watering it, weeding it. And we even had an apple tree that had about eight apples, which they we got to wash and eat. That was very exciting. And they added personal touches, and they painted rocks with their names written on them. And this also allows another element of connection for the children. And it gave me the opportunity to teach like things like bees and the importance of them. Many books and literature were brought in. It was just amazing. It's been just such an amazing year with this just so simple garden, and it's just touched their lives in a big way. And the best part, of course, is as it grows, we learned more about the different types of vegetables and how to take care of them. But they just were so excited. This has been amazing. And when our garden was ready, the best part, of course, is harvesting the crops. And if you look closely at the pictures, you'll see that we grew three teddy bear pumpkins and some squash, and there's strawberries back there and lemons. And of course, we bring it in to wash very thoroughly and cut them up into pieces. And we made a delicious ABC soup, I call it. And it was amazing. Eighty percent of the children had two and three bowls, and they had vegetables and normally would never try them. And here you see the they're reaping the rewards of the garden. Yeah, it's been amazing. So I wanted just to let you know that this year, they have doubled their consumption of vegetables and fruits. I can't believe it. It's been so rewarding. And so because of that, I started thinking the impact that it's had on them and if I could take it up another step. So I got this idea to paint a mural in the garden. And so I talked to Principal Jennifer Tomita, and she thought it would be great if we could get the high schoolers involved and have them participate. And I thought it would be a great way to have inclusion and kind of having the kids see older kids do that and also those kids having hopefully pride in what they're doing for others. I just thought it could be such an amazing thing. So this is all coming together, and it's going to be happening. So you never know, just from planting a seed, how great things can grow into. Thank you.
I I wanted to add that our MOT director has already approved the placement of our mural. And also, we're partnering with Redwood. And Principal Khan has been wonderful in connecting us with his art teacher there. And we will be having the students there design a mural. And then our staff and students will probably vote on which one, and then we will have them come and paint it as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our next, sorry, I'm looking right in front of it. We are going to recognize our volunteer at the Alma State Preschool. Is Wafa Odatala here? Oh, okay. Can we can we fill some time? Can we fill some time? I would I would just appreciate one thing. Oh, can we make comment to Principal Tomita? Can you just tell us a little bit more about the preschool program and why we have it? And I'd love this idea of we're planting seeds, right? Like, we this is literally the beginning.
So our Alma State Preschool is a state-funded preschool. We have an AM and a PM class, 20 students in each. And we used to have 24, but we lowered the number to 20 because of our TK expansion. We're getting younger students come in. So for safety, we wanted to make sure that we had enough ratio to support those students. We have teacher Lilia, who is our lead teacher, and we have three paras that work there for the AM and PM class to support it. And then you're going to hear about our volunteer, Wafa, who comes to us with our partnership with the Adult and Career Center.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Yeah, it's really just a really special place. We have a wonderful team. And it's nice because we also have our special ed preschool there. So our students get to see each other and play outside together. And we also have our music class that we do with our specialized classroom as well.
Well, with that being said, Wafa Odatala, come on down. We're going to recognize you.
Thank you so much.
No, don't go away yet.
No?
We're not done. The governance team, along with Alma State Preschool, are proud to honor Wafa Odatella. Hope I pronounced your name.
Yes, you're right. Thank you.
Wafa is a student in early childhood development. And as a student, she has a required number of volunteer hours. In partnership with the adult school, Wafa has been volunteering every Tuesday and Thursday at Alma State Preschool. Wafa is punctual, eager to learn, and works collaboratively with the team. She's always willing to help and ready to step in to do what's needed. She's respectful, patient, and caring in her interactions with students. Wafa has a very calming presence and works well with our preschoolers. The staff at Alma State appreciates Wafa and are grateful that she is a part of our team. The staff is confident that Wafa will continue to enrich the lives of many students as she continues on her path to be an educator for our youngest learners. The governance team, along with Alma State Preschool, are proud to honor Wafa Odatella, pardon me, as an outstanding volunteer.
Thank you so much.
Well, often not to put you too much more in the spot, but you are welcome. If you want to say a few words at all or reflections or...
Okay, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Lilia, and thank you to Ms. Jennifer, too. And the big thank for my teacher in adult school, Ms. Erin DeBaca, DeBexie. She's the one gave me the push to come and volunteer in Alma Preschool. I really have a beautiful experience, and I love to work with Ms. Lilia and her team. They work, and I see they are like not only working, I see that they work like as a families there. I really learned a lot from them, and I have a lot and a good experience. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys, for giving me this chance. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I hope you got to enjoy some of the soup that they made, or at least some of the vegetables from the garden. So let's go and have some board comments from our student board member, Indiana.
In terms of the presentation, I think it's so great that you guys are doing a garden. The environmental club at the high school right now is going around to all the English classes and presenting about the importance of planting your own garden. And I also think that's such a good skill to learn at a young age because I just killed a succulent, and I didn't even know. I didn't even know that was possible. So if I had that in preschool, maybe I would still have that plant. And I also, the student murals at the high school and Redwood are all really beautiful, and I think that will turn out really good at the preschool. And then for Wafa, I loved in preschool when we had outside volunteers at the school. So thank you for everything you do at Alma.
All right. So first of all, Wafa, thank you for giving your time to the preschool. I understand that you're required to do volunteer hours, but you could have done those anywhere. And it's just really nice to know that, you know, you wanted to give them to our kids here in the district. And I'm gonna echo Indiana's thoughts. The garden sounds fantastic. Thank you so much for sharing that program with us. It's always really fun to see kids like discover that they can grow something, you know, and that they can create something out of a pile of dirt and literally make something out of nothing. So that sounds really special. And the soup looked great, and hopefully see the murals soon. I'd love to come visit and check it out.
I also wanted to echo everything that was said. But I do want to say, Indiana, I grew up on a farm, and I still kill succulents. It's fine. Um, Wafa, it's so amazing. Hopefully, you'll consider CVUSD as you go down your learning journey as a potential employer at some point, given you're giving so much to our district. Hopefully, you consider us. And then Alma, I mean, those those kids are adorable. I mean, you walk around and you hear them just playing. And it's so exciting to see that they get to play with the dirt and learn how to grow things and learn science, like applied science. And how many kids get to do that besides those of us who grew up on a farm? Not many kids. And, you know, healthy eating is a lifelong journey. And thank you for starting our kids off early. Appreciate it.
Well, thanks for a really nice report. I've been in biology for 50 years, literally. And I think it's great that anything you do, that you can get kids' hands in dirt and show them the connection between the soil and food. I read some time back that there has been a loss of that connection for many of our young young children now, that they don't get it anymore. They literally think that apples come from Safeway. So it's good that you have them making soup out there out of their stuff they've grown. I think that's wonderful. So thanks for doing that. And Wafa, thanks and congratulations to you.
Okay, Alma State Preschool. My daughter, about 24 years ago, went there as a reverse mainstreamer. So the preschool here has a special heartfelt feeling. We also used to get the preschoolers, I was up in the double-wide trailer up the hill, and we would get them trick-or-treating at our classroom, too, which was absolutely fabulous. They're so cute, so adorable. And our third thing I want to mention is great working with Redwood High School, my my old school, and they have wonderful, as you you know, they have wonderful murals. And they have wonderful, as you, you know, they have wonderful murals up there. And I think they'll, they'll do a fabulous job really on the mural for Alma State Preschool. Thank you so much for coming and thank you very much, Ms. Wafa, for your volunteer work. It is greatly appreciated.
Thank you. So I have also killed succulents. So I think it's really not our fault. It's the succulents' fault. Or really, but Lilia is just amazing. Our teacher at preschool and Dr. Tomita's support and really leadership. Our preschool gets audited every year several times. And it always comes out with flying colors because of the kind of work that goes on there. So we get to see and visit. And last time I was there to read a book, the kids are absolutely beautiful, adorable. They, I mean, I love visiting all schools and all ages, but I have to say the preschoolers are the cutest. And they're so, so smart. Like when I was reading the book, answering, you know, they answered questions. I would say, well, how do you know that? It doesn't even look like they're in preschool because of the kind of, they're smart and you have done a beautiful job getting them really empowered to, to speak up. It's just a beautiful, beautiful place. And the habits that you're helping them form right now with the environment will carry them through and hopefully will have a much better environment as we do more of this in, in our schools. And Wafa, thank you so much for your work, for volunteering. And I love, this is what happens in our school district a lot. There's a lot of connections. So preschool, working with Redwood High School, and then preschool, working with adult school to make sure that we have those connections and create opportunities in so many different ways. So thank you for a great presentation. And if you haven't had a chance, maybe this year, it's just like they love it when we go in and they love it when you go and read a book to them. So thank you so much.
Thank you all for being here. And I, you know, if you're looking for acreage to expand your garden, my backyard needs help. I'm actually conveniently located down the street from Redwood High School. And I know that Mr. Khan has a garden there that he's looking to rehabilitate. So thank you for, for sharing that, you know, as a public school district, we are a public school district. I think it's important to recognize what we do for our community to build an inclusive community, one that welcomes all, all students. And this, I think, really speaks to that special mission, mission of a public school district. And I am so proud that we are able to host Alma Preschool. So thank you for your work there. It's, it's important that we maintain and support programs like this. And Wafa, I want to second Tracy Whitaker's words to you. Always looking for people to work in our district. And if, if this maybe inspired you in some way in your career pathway, check us out. But thank you for all of your support there. And thank you for being here tonight. We are going to move on now to our student board member report. What's up, Indiana?
Okay, so at the elementary level, Stanton had their monthly unity assemble on the 15th. And they're also, oh wait, sorry. And Chabot is having their Madagascar play. That's April 15th through the 26th. That should be pretty popular. And also track started at the elementary level. So all of the schools are getting involved in that. And CVE put on a successful Willy Wonka movie night on March 22nd. At the middle school level, the job fair was on March 16th. And that was at the high school. That was really successful. The seventh and eighth graders are continuing to prepare for the DC trip. That's getting closer. And there was also an avid college and career night on March 18th at Creekside. And then just a few things looking ahead, April 22nd through 26th is the Scholastic, Scholastic Book Fair. And on April 23rd, at the Center for the Performing Arts, they're putting, Creekside is putting on a showing of Chinatown Rising. And then at the high school, we're continuing to work with Sauce Pop. The clubs have been really successful in that. We had our 3v3 basketball tournament last week. The blood drive is in two weeks and Outsiders Play was really successful. And our next performance is Pops in April. So that's put on by the choir. Prom is also in April and we're also doing a cornhole tournament this year. Band and orchestra put on a jazz concert that was actually tonight at the high school. And prom tickets went on sale.
Thank you. It kind of terrifies me that we're starting to creep into the end of the school year. You'll be talking about May the next time we meet up. Let's go over to our superintendent.
It's very true. Just a couple of important events in the last couple of weeks that, that I was at. Last week, the Latino Student Awards was at the high school. It was, it was just beautiful to see hundreds of family members there to recognize their incredible work our Latino students have done. Hundreds of students earned awards for high GPA and excellent marks in various subjects. And the student performances were absolutely wonderful. Last week, I also attended the Lead with Pride Conference, State Conference. Actually, it was a national conference this year since they had people from all over the nation actually attending. And I, it's, I am so proud of our team. Patrick Hansen Schmidt was the chair of the conference planning committee. And one of our former students was also on the planning committee. It was absolutely amazing. Van was there as well. Our team actually presented, one of our social workers and, and we had teachers and, and administrators there. The Lead with Pride Conference was in Anaheim and it was just a beautiful thing. Lots of great workshops. April is Women's History Month, which I talked about at the last meeting. It also is the Social Workers Recognition Month. So the work that our CVUSD social workers do is a shining example in the state. Their commitment, and actually your commitment as a board, past and present, to supporting the social emotional wellbeing of our students and expansion of social work and wellness centers has been absolutely key. So I want to thank you for that. Our social workers work directly with students every day. They create safe and healthy spaces for students to tackle the challenges of growing up in a world that is not always kind to them as they grow up, explore and innovate, do great things and make decisions that are at times not exactly what's expected, accepted, or understood by adults. Our social workers have also worked with our teachers and coordinator of behavioral health to develop, refine, and create SCL and Abar lessons, that's anti-bias, anti-racist lessons, to create welcoming, inclusive, equitable, and safe spaces for all. So I want to take a moment to just kind of say a little bit about the importance of those lessons. Creating wise spaces, welcoming, inclusive, equitable, and safe spaces for our students means that all our students feel valued, respected, and loved. Structural and systemic racism throughout history and in the present time make it paramount that we help and make sure our students and people in general understand the impact of their actions and words and employ the compassion necessary to recognize the harm caused due to bias and hate. Students tell us that they hear harmful words, specifically racial slurs and homophobic slurs in just about everywhere, in the hallway, on the playground, in the classroom, in line, and at events. The responsibility to combat this is on all of our shoulders. The clarity and agreement around immediate response to racial slurs and how to respond afterwards is extremely important. And I'm really proud of our team, our classified, our certificated, our teachers and administrators working hand in hand, every, and every single one of them to be, to work on being equipped to decisively and appropriately address hate and bias. All of us can learn. All of us can do a better job. So we'll continue that work. A couple of important events coming up. Thursday, this Thursday, is African American Awards at Castro Valley High School to honor and celebrate our Black students' excellence. The Chabot College President, Dr. Jamal Cooks, is actually the keynote before presenting our students their awards for their amazing work. And the event starts at 6 o'clock at the CFA. Compassionate dialogue, when we talk about all of the work we need to do together in the community, we actually have it open to the entire community, actually Eden area, all of the Eden area. It's the RAR protocol that all of us are familiar with. Recognize, interrupt, and repair is on April 9th at 6:00 PM. We're fortunate to have epic expertise that have expertise in this area who also provide, have provided training for all of us the last two years. If you're, if people are interested, we encourage you, it's actually posted on our social media and you just go and register to get the link to actually attend the training. The Sonic Teacher of the Year is held on April 11th, 2024. And we will find out who our Teachers of the Year are and who have been nominated very soon. Students Citizen Award, where each, one student from each school is recognized, is April 18th at noon. Every single school in Castro Valley is participating. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and the sponsors for actually making this happen because it is all done by them. This will be a fantastic event. On April 18th, we also have the AXA Region 6, which is Alameda and Contra Costa County, awards where our administrators who have been nominated and have received awards are recognized. Last but not least, I hope that you all have a wonderful, amazing, relaxing, healthy, and safe spring break. That's it.
Thank you. So we're now to item seven, which is a recess, which I kind of miss my days in elementary school and getting a recess. So I'm going to tell Siri to give us a five minute recess and we'll be back for the rest of our meeting. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. Our next part of the agenda is item eight. These are reports from our labor union partners. Anyone from the California School Employees Association here to report out? No. I think our president of CVTA is here tonight. If he would like to talk to us, he can come forward right now.
In other cases, oh boy, the response from the administration did not seem adequate. We as frontline educators who work with students every day need support at the site level when we confront hate speech. And the support should not vary site to site. We need an age appropriate, transparent, consistent policy regarding hate speech. This policy needs to be shared with our staff and it needs to be followed by our site administrators. Our executive board recognizes that there have been, that there has been a lot of hard work that management and the board and our staff have done towards safe and inclusive schools. Just last year, for example, U stood strong and supported displaying pride murals at each of the sites, even in the face of opposition. even in the face of opposition. More than a few members shared that all the training and the signage and the SEL and the A bar lessons reflect the philosophy of the district. But when an incident actually happens, it needs to be acted upon in an appropriate and transparent manner. If we as staff do our part, we need to know that it is taken seriously. This is possible with a transparent, age appropriate policy that is clearly communicated to our staff and followed by our site administrators. Our executive board will continue to work with CBUSD in finding ways to support all students and staff and stand up against hate speech. And finally, I would like to thank my colleagues who are here tonight as well as those who are attending online. It is difficult to speak about how hate speech has impacted our membership, and I would like to especially thank those folks who will speak tonight. Thank you. Thank you for visiting, Allison. Thank you again for your comments. Now it's time for item nine, public comment for items not on the agenda. I acknowledge that I have speaker cards here that I've received. I'm going to ask Ms. Kair if there are any online. There are no, no one has raised their hand online. I don't see the number of cards here are fine. We're going to keep it to three minutes per person. As a reminder, this is not the US House of Representatives. You cannot yield your time to others. But let me welcome our first public speaker. And let me also acknowledge that I see many people out there and see many names I recognize. And I, we all care about the fact that you had taken the time to be here tonight and to say these things. And we are going to hear you and listen to you, but we will not respond to you as per my previous message. So let us, Doreen Valentine Giles. You are our first speaker. Welcome.
As Michael said, I am Doreen Valentine Giles, but everyone knows me in as Val Giles. The last, we have lived in the United States since 1964. And we have been residents of Green Ridge Road for 55 years. Unfortunately, we've lost quite a few of our original people up there. They are dying off or going into care homes. And so there's just a few of us left that went to the, to this area because it was the very first area in this, this environment that was. Oh, I lost my word. And that's the problem being 92, you, you lose words. Anyway, we, we were integrated beautiful place up there with people that really cared for others. Now 50, 55 years on, I finally get these vivid notices about Canyon Middle School. It was when we, we were there, it was Canyon High School and my kids went there. They have always been very good neighbors. We've, we've never had any problems with Canyon High School. The, the children up there love the place and they respect it. They have a cross country race every now and again, and it goes past the bottom of our hill. And we enjoy them to have this sort of notice, bringing in things that are really irrelevant. Makes me feel that we, I ought to get up and do something about it. Because the, the, the school is really, as, as you know, it's now really hemmed in by the, the houses on both sides. They have very little space to do anything extra for the children. And my, I've always said that unless you get children in sort of using their energy in, on a soccer field or a baseball field, they're going to use their energy to do something first. Is that my three?
Five minutes, Val, but I want to invite you, if you have comments, how about you can send us an email. We'd be happy to review them if you have any other information you want to share with us.
I had it all set up for three minutes, but it, oh God.
Thank you so much for being here. I'd like to invite Promise Martinez.
Hello, I am Promise Martinez. I would like to talk about the racism and bias that is going around in my school. From my experiences from last year and this year, it has gone down dramatically from last year. But just because it has gone down does not mean it's fully stopped. From other schools and my experiences, I've only seen people talk about their religion and not open to other ideas. So they make fun of other religions thinking it's okay because it's different than from theirs. The bias has been going around, people not being educated or people not telling them from right from wrong because they do not want to seem as a snowflake or someone that can't take a quote unquote joke. And some kids or younger kids, even people in elementary don't understand that sometimes if they think it's funny, it's not funny to others. And as much as it, as much as it's disappointing to see sixth graders that are fresh out of elementary saying these kinds of things, it doesn't stop because some kids don't, are scared to tell out or some other kids are, they think it's funny to put down others. Hate speech has been circling around a lot lately. Racial slurs, commenting on your gender, skin tone, sexuality, because people think it's a joke and it's funny. A lot, a lot has been circling around about body weight or how you look or how you act. So just because you aren't, or just because you don't act how other people want you, you are excluded or you aren't perfect like them. And that's been going along around since maybe since I was in elementary and sixth grade and seventh grade. It hasn't stopped just because the repercussions and I believe children are not scared of the repercussions that the school puts out for them. They're scared of their parents at most. So the only reason why they act out at school is because their parents can't tell them off or no one's going to know because no one speaks out. And how no one speaks out, people think it's okay. Or how no one tells them that this is wrong or this is right. They do what they think is okay. Or they think that since this is validating for me, I can do it to others. And based on religion, if you don't have the same religion as I do or someone else, then you don't deserve to have respect. You can't do this or you can't do that. And racial slurs, this bias in general has been circling around a lot. And no one's really taken a stand to stop that.
Promise, thank you so much for your comments. We really appreciate you coming here tonight. Our next speaker is Aiden Gutierrez.
Good luck following that, right? So shout out to Misa Promise Martinez. That was wonderfully said. My concerns are very similar. I've, in fact, I've taught a lot of your, your students, or I continue to teach some of your students today. And what disturbs me about this is, you know, I teach because I love, I love people. And Creekside, these are my people. And to see students suffering, to see staff members suffering, to see parents suffering is very, very hard and difficult to deal with on a day to day basis because I can control what's in my four walls. And I try to bring the environment that is ideal so students can feel welcome, so students can feel included, so students can feel brave, so students can feel confident just being themselves. And the incidents that have happened lately with the incident with James Dadzy his absence from our school is disturbing to me. This is the second black teacher in the past three years, I believe, who has left due to blatant racism. Students like Misa, students like whose names I don't want to say out because I don't know if they feel comfortable doing that, dealing with bullying, dealing with issues that they shouldn't have to deal with because school is supposed to be a safe place. There shouldn't be just, whoop, excuse me, one spot on school where they can go to each and every week and just be sent out and have to deal with these problems again and again and again. They've had enough grace. They've shown us grace. And I think we need to reward them because by showing them action. There's a lot of beautiful words that I hear in emails. There's a lot of beautiful words I hear at staff meetings. There's a lot of beautiful words. I hear about how we're against racism and how we're against inequality. But it doesn't mean anything after a while. And I don't know if you guys see that like we do on the ground. Because I used to have students who come to me each week and I send them the counseling office where I listen to them and I talk to them and I try to get them the courage to get back out there. I've had students who've, who threaten suicide over these issues. And it's hard for me to look them in the eye and be their hero when I, we feel like we don't have the policy to defend it. We need better policies and we need the backbone to stick to those policies because that's true. There is opposition. But to me, this comes down to what is good and what is evil, what is right and what is wrong. And, you know, I'm just as nervous as, as, as Misa is coming up here speaking. But if a 13 year old kid can come up here and stand up for what's right, then I really have no truth, no, no, no room to talk. And at the end of the day, I want to make sure we do what's right because I want to believe in this community. I'm inspired by this place. I want to send my daughter here. My, my wife lives here. I have students here and I want it to be a better place. And I want to make sure by the end that we still have our souls intact. And that's why we're here, for our souls to be intact.
Thank you for your comments, Aiden. Our next speaker is Jenny Goslin.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jenny Goslin. I am a sixth grade teacher at Creekside Middle School. And be better were the words I used to summarize a talk I had with my students at the end of January 2023. In regards to the racist, hateful and disgusting language they were using to and about one another. This was over 400 days ago, and I'm coming to you today to urge for swifter action to policy changes in order to protect our students and staff who have been discriminated against then and now. My colleagues have heard me say this for years, but I'm tired of things being reactive and not proactive. There was a chance to be proactive 14 ish months ago and it was kicked down the road, which is another problem in education. We kick things down the road until it's forgotten or the school year ends and we start again, assuming it will change and it doesn't. Again, we should be proactive and in a recent letter from our principal, we were reminded that the policies that address hate language and speech will be augmented as needed. Well, they are needed. We are not fully equipped and it needs to change. We have to be better and stop failing our kids with excellent teachers. Strongly consider resigning or do resign due to lack of support, strain on their mental health, being discriminated against, or any other combination of those factors. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Jenny. Michelle Ruiz.
Hi, I'm Michelle. I'm a teacher at Creekside Middle School and I stand with James Dadzy and Against Racism. Before there was James, there was Nusira. And before Nusira, there were countless teachers who endured the insidiousness, racism and silence. Both Nusira and James left Creekside due to racism within the past three years. We will continue to lose incredible colleagues of color if the district doesn't take concrete action. I stand here sick and heartbroken. I've been having trouble sleeping and I worry for the safety of my colleagues and students. We are begging for a public, age appropriate, zero tolerance policy that is clearly communicated to staff, students and the community, as well as followed by all site administrators. Hate language and racial slurs in the classroom are violent, degrading acts that traumatize our students every day. We have students saying it's not worth fighting against because it's everywhere. One student told me racism is on every inch of this campus. I've heard these stories all of my teaching career in Castro Valley, and I've done everything in my power to be a safe adult, an ally for my students. These past few years, I've been feeling incredibly helpless. It feels like the policies in place are upholding white supremacy and victimizing our students and staff of color. When a discipline matrix for hate speech was presented at our staff meeting, I put my head in my hands and wept like a child. I kept saying to myself over and over again, this isn't good enough. This isn't good enough. If a student uses the N word in my class, it is just as violent as slapping someone across the face. How can we learn and grow and find peace in such a toxic, violent environment? We can't. We all deserve to feel safe going to work and our students deserve to feel safe going to school. We will not be safe until some concrete action is taken. And to be honest, it's not time to play it safe, to be lukewarm or mild, to be hesitant and slow moving. No, this is a time to be brave, to stand up, to back up our flowery words and grit with grit and with teeth. It's time we stand up against racism in Castro Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Amy Penn.
Good evening. My name is Amy Penn and I'm a teacher at Marshall Elementary School. And I'm here to urge the board to institute a zero tolerance policy when it comes to racism. I actually had something different prepared to say tonight, but then yesterday, two of my students got called the N word. That now makes 100% of my students, my black students, you can call the N word this year. And when I say this year, I don't mean this school year. I mean 2024. So I sat on my couch last night and perseverated over the fact of how I was not going to be satisfied with how the situation was going to be handled again, again. So as I sat there, an email came through. And so now, as any good avid teacher would, I am going to annotate the text for you. So annotating the text, you use either symbols or comments in the margins to help the reader connect more with the text. So here we go. Good afternoon, Team Marshall. Please read the statement below. Racial slurs have historically been and continue to be an issue in the Castro Valley Unified School District. I would put a check mark there. I know that. It is imperative that each and every one of us recognize the harm caused by racial slurs and derogatory language and respond clearly and decisively to repair the harm. There's a fallacy in that statement. Those marks are indelible. As a district, we are committed to ridding our schools of the racist and harmful language. Sometimes I have to wonder about that because there are no consequences. Obviously, I'm an educator. I'm all about educating, but education has to come with some consequence and there are none. There are district wide steps that all schools are working on to address the issue, including meeting with site staff and deciding how we will interrupt this language. I've never been in any of those meetings. I don't think they're happening at my site. We already have several board policies that address hate language and speech, but not a zero tolerance policy. In addition to updating as needed, it's needed. We are in the process of augmenting our district wide policies in order to eliminate racial slurs, i.e. the N word, other anti-black language, et cetera. We will be discussing more, this more in detail at our upcoming meetings. More discussing, more time, but no action. Ashley and I are committed to continuing this work at Marshall. You can't continue what you've never started. And we will have the conversations by the end of the school year. Sounds pressing, right? By the end of the school year. So while.
I really appreciate your comments. If you'd like to forward maybe the rest of what you wrote, you are welcome. Okay. Thank you. We appreciate it. I'd like to invite Laura Sempoloda. I I'd like to invite Laura Sempoloda.
I'm here in solidarity with my colleagues of color, particularly James Dadzy and the countless students who experience hate language at what should be a safe place for them, school. Without going into the specifics of the racism James experienced here in CVUSD, I will tell you that if he chooses to share a story with you, it's heartbreaking, multifaceted and maddening. And he's an adult. I can only imagine what our students experience every day. It's not only me who feels this way. The majority of Creekside staff members have a signed petition, which I have with me here today, in support of James and dismayed that the district's official communication regarding his leave of absence doesn't mention racism. While none of us are accusing the board or district leadership of being racist, we are standing in front of you today asking for a concrete policy against racism and hate speech. Furthermore, when that policy is created, be transparent about it with all stakeholders, administrators at every level, at every site, staff members, students and their adults at home. While we've worked together at Creekside to create a catchphrase that we will use when we hear hate speech on campus, there's no real policy or guidelines for consequences. And yes, I got the email from district leadership yesterday saying there are many board policies already in place taking a stand against hate speech and racism. I challenge you today, however, to produce a policy that has defined consequences for those that use hate speech. My colleagues and I have scoured district literature and board policy looking for anything that restricts hate speech or outlines consequences to no avail. Perhaps it's an oversight, an optimism that such a policy isn't necessary in twenty twenty-four. But I can assure you, this is not the case. Students are emboldened to say demeaning and degrading things to one another and adults on campus because they are well aware there are little to no consequences for such abhorrent behavior. Ask a student what they hear each day at school. You'll likely be surprised. Adults at home are emboldened to call into question any lesson taught or consequence their child may receive as a result of being a bystander to racism or being an aggressor in a hate speech situation. Suspensions have been overturned because of parent complaints. District leadership will tell you this isn't so. I have Aries screenshots proving different. I'm happy to share them with you if you'd like. Ask one administrator on campus about a situation and you'll get a completely different story and potential consequences outlined than if you ask another administrator on campus. It's shocking the level of dehumanization we tolerate. Let's do better.
Thank you for your comments, and I would like to invite up Tyler Lamb.
Thank you for letting me have your time. I would like to, well, I'm Tyler Lamb first. I'm an eighth grade student at Kash- not Kashfali, sorry, Creekside Middle School. I'd like to talk about uh, Mr. Dadzy, the ethnic studies teacher and seventh grade English teacher. Students have called him racial slurs, including monkey, watermelon eater and fried chicken eater. These are unjust terms and he should get justice. Students nowadays do not know the consequences of racism. They take it as a light joke. These policies at the school board do not really punish students who use racism. They think as a light rule that can be broken without any punishment. These students shouldn't face one day of uh suspension. They should be expelled immediately because this kind of hate language and racism should not be tolerated in our community. I think they should be moved to a separate school or put in uh, counseling or therapy. And they should be what? They should take a break from school and learn the consequences of racism. That was a short speech, but thank you for letting me use your time.
Tyler, thank you so much for coming here tonight to make your comments. Uh, Lizzie, Lizzie Millard.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Lizzie Millard and I teach sixth grade at Creekside Middle School. I come tonight to voice my support for my colleague, Mr. James Dadzy, in requests that the board, the district office and all site administrators take a strong, united stand against racism on our campuses. Many of the exact slurs used in Mr. Dadzy's seventh grade classroom this year were used in my sixth grade classroom and at outdoor school last year. Each instance was reported to site administration and shared with involved parents. I have months of documentation and communication that seemingly fell on deaf ears. It was a very emotional and frustrating experience to observe events play out this past winter, knowing that I, along with many other colleagues, tried to sound an alarm, take action and educate the community regarding this exact language over a year ago. It is time for Castro Valley Unified to create, uphold a uniform, explicit, zero-tolerance policy and truly stand against hate. And that's all.
Thank you, Lizzie, and thank you everyone who made public comment tonight. I would be happy to accept it. Yes. Uh, well, if that person is in the audience, if you'd like to email us, we'd be happy to take your comments. Uh, so now we are going to our next agenda item, which is item number ten. It's an action item for the consent agenda.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Here are one. Can I get a two?
Second.
Excellent. We have a first and a second. Let us vote.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Uh, Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And I am a yes. That is six, zero. The consent agenda is approved. Um, so our next agenda item is eleven A. I'm going to open a public hearing. I have opened a public e- uh, hearing to present sunshine proposals from CBUSD and CBT-A on article reopeners. Do I do anything else other than close the public meeting, public hearing? Oh, you know. I close it. Okay, so I'm now ending. Unless there are, are there any comments on this archaic constitutional um thing we're doing here? Okay, I'm ending the public hearing. Okay, um, thank you. Uh, so eleven B, we are going to get an update on the culinary arts presentation. I hope you all have had dinner. Or if you haven't, you will be inspired to make a really great dinner, I'm sure, when you go home. So let's get this uh, information item on the culinary arts program for the career technical education program.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm happy to introduce the team that's been working together for a while now to plan the future of the culinary program at CVHS. Uh, we've got Assistant Principal Hendy, Oliver, who's a student uh in the culinary program at Eden Area ROP, Ms. Gilmore, who is our culinary teacher, and then Ms. Sharon Truquins, who is helping us to put the plans together for this beautiful new culinary space. So with that, Mr. Hendy is going to take us through what the program is going to look like for the future of culinary at CVHS.
Thank you, Mr. Luwango. We are excited to be here tonight to talk about the remodeling of Room four oh nine at Castro Valley High School in order to support a state-of-the-art culinary arts room uh, in support of the culinary and hospitality pathway at CVHS. I'm joined tonight by um, who Mr. Luwango covered. And with that, we're going to go through a little presentation about what the plans are for the the space and what the opportunities are for student learning. So currently, we do have the culinary and hospitality pathway. This will enhance, the room space will be enhanced um, in order to give students um, like more opportunities within that um, discipline. Currently, the program is articulated with Eden ROP and their culinary program, and students also earn credit um, at DVC um, through uh concurrent uh dual enrollment. Work is ba- work-based learning is provided for these culinary students currently, and that's highly engaging and relevant. It's all activity and project-based for them. Um, it is also staffed by uh CTE credentialed teachers. Currently, the course sequence involves foods and nutrition and hospitality and culinary arts as the culminating course. We will be adding an advanced catering class um, that will also include capstone projects. Students will get additional certifications in food handling. Um, they'll also be able to provide support for events and activities uh on campus throughout the district and um, other opportunities as they come up. The advanced catering class could focus on projects like custom cupcake service, uh, herb oils and vinegar, uh, maybe some fundraising opportunities, hosted family dinner, could be a capstone project at the end of the year, and then also helping out with CVUSD and CVHS events. Um, frequently, uh, already in the program and throughout our CTE programs in general, we host industry professionals and speakers, but there could be even more opportunities for that with the new space. We're looking forward to a projected start date for this uh, the following school year. Uh, not this one coming up, but the one after, twenty-five, twenty-six, kind of hard to say. Um, where the students will still remain in the two levels of class, and then the following year we'll be adding the advanced catering class so that the students have this three-year progression of classes to take. Um, we anticipate uh minimal costs in terms of the the room and the, you know, the equipment that's in the room to start with. Um, you know, maybe ongoing, there could be some repairs of equipment that we would have to um, find funding sources for that. Um, and then additional food and uh materials costs that would be uh used to augment the program ongoing. So some of that would be coming through some startup money, um, through Ed Services possibly, Perkins and also self-funded fundraising opportunities that the students would participate in. Uh, it would probably require also an additional point two for after-school activities, regular grocery visits, supporting that teacher um, so that they can provide the opportunities to the students as well. Um, and then in terms of additional district-specific support, Mr. Luwango is going to take over and talk a little bit about that.
Just wanted to quickly reiterate that this will be a team effort, so we'll be collaborating with Eden Area ROP, where there'll be opportunities for internships through that organization, and they have a culinary program there, so there's opportunity for overlap with our two programs. And then, as you see, there's two funding sources right now that we know have, that are in place, that we're able to use. So CTIG is our um, career technical education incentive grant, and then Perkins, we know for sure is going to continue. And then we know this is just a big project with our facilities team, and so to get this off the ground, they're going to be doing the bulk of the work as we see, as you're going to see in just a moment, with the cool new plans that are coming into play for what this new space is going to look like. And so ongoing upkeep should be fairly easy to sustain, but the project itself is going to be amazing. So with that, I want to introduce our student, Oliver, who's going to speak a little bit about his experience with the culinary program um, and share his perspective.
Hello, my name is Oliver, and I've been, this is my first year in the culinary arts program at Eden ROP. Uh, it's been going fairly well, and just recently, we have a project about making cupcakes. And they get like, we host it, so people come in and judge our cupcakes based on like their appearance, their taste. Uh, and last year, we also had a cookie contest, something like the cupcake contest. So at Eden ROP, I've been really enjoying just being there and learning how to cook has helped me in general because like it's a life skill and you would always need it. Uh, and something that would be, I like to have it at Castro Valley would be good because it would like help more students get together and unite and explore like different culinaries from different cultures.
And next up, we have Ms. Gilmore, our expert culinary teacher that's currently at CBHS.
Hi, I'm uh, uh, I'm Vicky Gilmore, and I've been teaching uh foods and nutrition and hospitality and culinary arts at the high school um, for twenty-five years, so I've been around a bit. Um, I'm glad that this project is finally moving forward because it's been sort of in the waves for the last fifteen, twenty years, and now it's going to move on to some uh, a place that's going to be much better than the classroom I have from nineteen fifty-three. Um, our students are really excited about this. And I'm excited about being able to have a facility that really opens it up to um students learning a skill that they can carry on into the future. I know that um, they'll benefit from it greatly. I've owned a restaurant. I had a bean trading company, and I was in the hospitality industry as a fly, international flight attendant for twenty years, so I think I've got a good perspective over it, but um, I hope that we can move this on. Thank you.
And now to get a sense of what this is all going to look like in reality, some beautiful plans have been put together, and Ms. Sharon is going to take us through.
Thank you, David. So uh, now that you've heard about the program, I want to show you about what the space uh will look like. So with everything that we've heard, we took into consideration and we created this plan. So this is for uh, what they call Room four oh nine. So it's its own little building. It used to be the old metal shop. So it's a building uh, that's between the four hundred and the five hundred hall. And it's currently um, be, it's storage right now. It's underutilized. I think previously it was a physics classroom. And so right now, we're, you know, looking at really renovating the space, and we have um, we had uh successfully gotten the grant to do so. So with this floor plan, it splits up the space into two main um, teaching spaces. It has the culinary classroom on the left where um, it has uh, the instruction station in the front and uh, mobile table so that it can uh, kind of be a more of a flex space, kind of uh, more lecture, but it also can be also set up like a dining room, maybe buffet style, also have like demonstrations um, with that. And then on the right is a culinary lab so that it has um, you know, stations that kids can split up and there are uh, the commercial-sized kitchen that is set up. Okay. And uh, so we also have a scholarly, a scholarly area with a whole um, commercial dishwasher. There's also next, that's on the bottom right. We have the cafe serving window, which uh, creates a uh, a little serving area that is out towards the center of campus. And so I want to show you some renderings of the space. So this is the culinary classroom that can um, flex into a hospitality space for catering or events. And then this is the lab space. And we have a a view from the outside um, of the serving window so that it could um, provide coffee or tea service, or even if they have like um, meal pickup, if it did like an after-school's um, you know, uh, meal for staff. Uh, and then we have the timeline and for construction. Uh, we've actually finished with the design. We have DSA approval. And so after this, we would go into the bidding phase um, with our contractor. And uh, construction is projected for fall of this year and be completed uh, summer of twenty twenty-five. And hopefully, we will open with a big ribbon cutting in August of twenty twenty-five. Uh, funding, so uh, like I mentioned before, the long name for the program, the state program, it's actually a state funding program. And but they make you um, put in application and compete, so it's a competitive um, grant. So it's for the career technical education facilities program. So we went through the hospitality, tourism and recreation pathway with the So we went through the hospitality tourism and recreation pathway with the culinary. And so we were able to secure 1.7, almost 1.8 million in state funding. And it requires a 50% match from local funds, which we can support with the state funds that we have. And so the total project's about 3.5 million. And that is all. So questions?
I'm Vice President Adams.
I just want to say I'm really very supportive of, supportive of this program. When I was teaching at Redwood, I would get students who wanted to be chefs, wanted to be cooks and go into this kind of program. And the only thing, place to send them was to like private schools, like in San Francisco, very expensive, way beyond most of their means. Or they would have had to take out terribly high loans. So I think it's really fantastic that we're going to have this right here in our town and at our high school. Thank you so much for all the people with the vision to see to do this.
Trustee Whitaker.
I want to thank you all for your presentation here today. I want to say Ms. Gilmore, 25 years, congratulations. That's a, that's a good year. And then Oliver, right? Thank you so much for sharing your perspective. I see your families here with you tonight. So thank you. Appreciate that. And I'm just really looking forward to, you know, creating differing opportunities for our kids to, you know, expand the, the different types of things that they can get into and learn about and consider in their future. Well, thank you.
I had some, okay, trust, student board member, Chilton.
Just from a student perspective, I think this sounds amazing. Like I would definitely take that if I would still be here. And I think a lot of students will be really excited because it gets them more proactive and like actually cooking. Most of the people I know who take foods and nutrition are really interested in all of it. But the big draw is the on-hand stuff. So I feel like that facility would work really well. And also in between 300 and 400, the work they're doing right now there is really nice. And I feel like this will just add even more to it.
I, trustee Raymond.
I think this will be a quick question. I, and as your purpose was by saying, I think this sounds fantastic. It's really cool. But I'm curious if you could speak a little more, any of you to just with the overlap with ROP will be and what kind of impact that might have on ROP. Are we worried about that? Are we excited about that? Like I'm just curious.
Yeah, some people, I, I would imagine some students are going to want to be home-based with that. And maybe just have a one-period obligation where ROP is going to go, you know, three, three hours almost over there and you have half your school day. So I'm thinking that we can find some balance between the two programs and both have plenty of students to, to work from.
That's great. No, I think that sounds wonderful. Thank you. And Oliver, also thank you very much for like sharing your story with us tonight. I know it can be really scary to get up and, you know, share, but it's so important for us sitting here to hear from our students about, you know, what your experiences are and what you're hoping to gain, you know, from something like this. And I, I, I really like this idea. It sounded to me when you were talking about if you had a cohort of kids from Castro Valley who are all really interested in making food and exploring food together. That's not just like a path towards maybe a career one day, but it's great community building, you know? So thank you for sharing that perspective and thanks for the additional comments that are.
That's right. They can use, I was, I just want to add a couple of things to the presentation.
And I have some questions and I'll do that for you. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I, first of all, this grant that came up and, and you worked on, it's a competitive grant. So you've got the entire state actually applying and to get it, it has to be really thoughtful. So I would just want to thank you because if we didn't have the grant, we wouldn't be able to do any of this. And I, and I just, I want to say this is so important. Oliver talked about this. Not just, and I, and I completely agree with trustee Arraman about it's a community building in addition to everything else. But I have two boys who actually had foods, actually both of them in, in high school. Both of them have grown up to do other things, but they are absolutely amazing chefs. And it really is beautiful to watch how much they love it and how it has changed how they eat and how they do things. So it's really a lifelong thing. And I, I'm so excited about all the different opportunities for like serving and, and business and all of that. So thank you so much. Great job. And the question about ROP is an excellent one because we do have a phenomenal program at ROP. And there are kids that actually need more time than just one hour. And they'll also be really mentoring our kids and working closely with the teacher there as well. So it's a really great like relationship and there are plenty of students for both.
I have two questions. I was curious to know, will there be induction stove tops? Are we still using gas? And I asked that just from an environmental and serve safety point of view.
Right now, the equipment spec is gas ranges, but it is also outfitted with enough power that if we want to switch it to induction ranges, it can be. I think we had worked with a consultant who is also a CTE teacher in culinary. And she actually advised that she usually uses the portable ones. And so that can also be used in the classroom. That's more of the demonstration space. But we'll have kind of similar to engineering is like the pull down coils of the power so that they can just, you know, kind of hook in whatever other appliances. So it's more flexible.
Thank you for, for sharing that. I'm just curious. I, I don't want to sound so crass, but how do you make sure you're not going to burn down the high school? Like, how do you, how, what are the safety redundancies in place for a kitchen at a high school where kids are?
Yeah. Yeah. So on the facility side, that's, there's, there is a fume hood. That's, that is rated for commercial kitchens. And this will dump a lot of chemicals on if there's actually a fire.
Great.
That's what they have in restaurants. And, and what it is, is it's, it's the, the commercial part actually goes through the county health department for approval. So it actually gets a health permit similar to a restaurant would so that they would also have yearly inspections. And, and that is part of, I've seen also the training for the kids to like know how you would work in a restaurant and do kind of the daily operations and upkeep.
Yeah, just briefly like knife skills, cooking skills, but also in our auto program, same kind of safety first in our science classes, safety first. So there's a big emphasis on that when we're doing those first few months with the students and ongoing too. Yeah.
And I just wanted to thank Oliver for being here. I, I, I love food probably too much and I love to bake and cook myself. If you ever want a guest baker or cooker, I'd be happy to be there. I'd love to, I'm very good at sauteing and making canned sauces. But I, as, as everyone on the board knows, I need to go home and make a cheesecake tonight. But I have a really great trick also for chocolate chip cookies. And I know that Brooke over the high school really appreciates my chocolate chip cookies. So I really appreciate this. It's so consistent with Bay Area culture too, right? Like we are a Mecca for, for food and culinary arts. We're seeing programs at colleges and universities really focusing on this. So there's a lot of different pathways here, whether it's, if it's a college or not college. So it's really wonderful that we are offering this type of program. And Sharon, you're always fighting for money for us. And I love this again, you're turning a penny into a dollar. So thank you for, for advocating for, for this facility. Thank you. And lavender, oh lavender.
Say what we can be taste testers too.
Yeah, yeah.
I won't help you cook. Don't, don't make me do that. I don't want to get people sick.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for taking the time to be here tonight. Our next item is informational. It's about the girls' flag football pilot. Thank you.
All right. It is great to be with you tonight to introduce and discuss the possibility of piloting a new sport at Castro Valley High School. The California Interscholastic Federation approved girls' flag football as an eligible sport for high schools to consider supporting this school year. And flag football's growth is exploding currently. And the opportunity to potentially field a team at Castro Valley High School aligns with our desire to provide equitable access and opportunities to our students. So after seeing the potential benefits for students and the high level of interest, our own Castro Valley High School APAD Katie Stacy formed a work group that included Director of Student Services McMaster and myself to explore what this might look like at Castro Valley High School. And I apologize that Director McMaster would have been here tonight with us, but he is celebrating the first birthday of his son tonight. So tonight we would like to ask Castro Valley High School APAD Katie Stacy to share our findings and provide an overview of the opportunity that this program would provide to our students at Castro Valley High School. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Katie Stacy.
Thank you, Dr. Gottrou. Good evening, board members. My name is Katie Stacy, Assistant Principal and Athletic Director at Castro Valley High School. We have an exciting opportunity for students that I'm looking forward to sharing with you tonight. Tonight I'm here to look for your direction as we hope to pilot girls' flag football next school year. Flag football is in the news. As mentioned, last year, California Interscholastic Federation sanctioned the sport, providing access to female athletes all over the state. Due to its safer, more equitable and inclusive nature, it continues to be one of the fastest growing sports today. Flag football moves students from the sideline to the field. The NFL is investing resources in order to provide interested athletes with opportunities. I have been in communication with personnel from the 49ers who have shared an interest to host a training camp for interested athletes. At Castro Valley High School, the leadership class currently hosts a ladies' flag football game with over 200 students that sign up regularly. Students are extremely interested in this opportunity and are advocating for opportunities to take part and are wondering when this is going to be an offering that's available for students at CBHS. There are many ways that the decision to bring on flag football aligns with our strategic directions. Specifically, this decision speaks to our core values by uplifting students through access and equity. Our students want to be included in this opportunity. Last year, after the CIF sanctioned the sport, as mentioned, we surveyed female and non-binary students. Over 100 students showed interest. Since I have continued to receive communication from students and parents who are interested in learning when this will be an option at CBHS. Locally, we have districts in our league who have fielded a team this year. Next year, if we are included, there will be 10 out of 12 schools in our league with flag football teams. Providing access is important. We have really thought through how to bring this to the high school for pilot next school year. I have been in communication with schools in our league and flag football has been a discussion item in our athletic director meetings throughout the entirety of this year. We have come up with a facility usage plan because of the impact this will have on our already impacted facilities. We have discussed expenses. This sport would act and be funded just like all other sports at CBHS. Most funds would be accrued through athletic participation and fundraising. Some of the costs are startup costs, but annual costs would be stipend and West Alameda County Conference fees specifically. I really hope I have your support to move forward with the piloting of flag football at CBHS next school year. Through the pilot opportunity, the hope is to demonstrate viability for ongoing adoption for athletic offerings for years to come. If the green light is received, work would start on hiring a coach and beginning the process of organizing the details to share with the community in order to provide access for students to participate in flag football at CBHS. Your direction is appreciated. Do you have any questions?
I want to just share something before we respond to, I mean, ask questions. We did this about seven, eight years ago when we started water polo. So what we did, we piloted first because there was great interest. And then the next year after we kind of worked out all the bugs, then we came to have it approved. And now they have been champions two years in a row. So it's, it's been a great thing. We did not have a water polo team before. So this is why I, I really appreciate you being very thoughtful about the piloting and process first to make sure that we're in a good place before we come back to you.
So there was one public comment. Do we go to that first before we discuss? Yeah, let's do that. Hi, Erin. Good to see you. Welcome.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
We can totally hear you. You got three minutes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say fully in support of this. I am a mother of an rising eighth grader coming to the high school next year. She's been very actively involved in girls' flag football. This is a sport that's growing very significantly here in the East Bay. There's lots of outside leagues and girls are really excited about being a part of it. And you know, the fastest growing sport, high school sport in the U.S. right now is girls' wrestling. And I would say with flag football being sanctioned, it will be certainly the leader to come. So I'm very excited about Castro Valley, about the coaches that are interested in coaching these girls at our school and certainly support this 100%.
Erin, thanks so much for calling in tonight. You're well.
Thanks.
Okay. So let's go to, are there any questions or comments? Trustee Raymond and then trustee Whitaker.
Thank you so much. So first of all, this sounds like a really great opportunity for some of, some of our girls, maybe a lot of them. And one question I have there, just so that it's clear for me, when we talk about piloting a program, it means like launch it for a season and then see if it worked before fully implementing it.
Yes, we would be, you know, analyzing how it goes, the student interest. We'd be getting feedback from, you know, students and coaches and hopefully carrying on future opportunities.
Okay, that's great. Thanks.
Trustee Whitaker.
So I am so excited because, you know, having girls and non-binary folks have equal access is very, very important and aligns with our board mission values. Question, you said there are 10 other schools in our area. Can you share a little bit more about, not necessarily the schools themselves, but is that just in Alameda County? Is that just in the East Bay?
So in our conference, West Alameda County Conference, we have 12 schools. And out of those schools, those 12, eight this year have fielded a team. Next year, the hope and the communication that I've received in the athletic director meetings is that two level, they're going to have two levels. They started this year with one level and so we're hoping to pilot with two levels like the other eight. Now it's going to be nine. If we're included, it'll be 10 schools.
And then the other question I have is, you know, we cheer on our boys. Are we going to also have cheers leaders for our girls?
The spirit squad does, you know, manage their schedule to be able to provide spirit at all events. So yes, that will be another one that they bring on their list for sure.
Thank you. Cause you know, we got to cheer them on as well.
Most definitely.
And then do we know which teams we need to beat?
Oh, yes.
There's some farmers down the street.
They're all wanting Castro Valley to be included. That's for sure.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Vice President Adams.
I just wanted to say this is really wonderful. I'm so glad we're doing this. It's, you know, women's history event that March and here we are talking about something else for, you know, our girls and our non-binary people to, to belong to and do. And it's good Title IX stuff, right? All that. Yes. And this seems to be relatively, you know, safe sport as well.
Trustee Howard.
Yeah, I just have sort of a dumb question. That is, where do you play? Is it, is it a regulation football field or is it smaller or what?
It is a little smaller, but the field layout and everything, we, we do have awareness of how we're going to go about implementing the field. It's a shorter time game. So we have all the details in terms of that.
It might allow us to have multiple fields though, if it's a smaller field.
They're, they actually will play in the stadium.
They are going to play in the stadium?
They will play in the stadium.
Okay, that's a good idea. I like it. Okay, that's a good idea. I like it.
I've got some question. Yeah, yeah, well, so I just had a question and comment. I really appreciated your comment. Trustee Whitaker, so I'm just curious to know, is this, will this be a spring sport or will this be in the fall? When will it be?
This is a fall sport, which is why a lot of planning has to go into the facility usage and the timing for practices and the scheduling as well, because it will be in the fall.
So how do we go about ensuring to the, this idea of equity? How do we make this a big deal, like, you know, homecoming for, for the boys' football team? Like, how do we ensure that, like, it has that status? And maybe I'm overthinking this, but I'm just putting that out there to the universe that, and then. How does this change the, I know that some girls can play on the boys' football team, correct? So that, that, okay. And then I, this is just more commentary and can just tell me to shut up. But it just seems obvious to me that this points out to disparity in safety between flag football and tackle football. So I'll just let that hang out there. So this is an informational item, so we're not providing direction per se, but you know, I like the color green. So I like lights that are green. Who are we? We can taste.
You, you actually were asking for direction and we heard from.
Heard some direction from us.
Yeah, so it'll be exciting. Indiana.
Indiana.
I definitely have a lot to say about this because ladies' flag football, when we do it just for the week in May, it's so popular at school. Like, it's all the way in May and everyone is already talking about it, like leadership has been planning for super long. And then I know that Cal High is one of the school who has, schools who has a team this year. And I have friends there who love playing and I know like a lot of people, probably including myself, who would love to be on the team. So yeah, I think, and I would just like to recognize that there are girls on the actual football team this year. And so like, there's always opportunity for that, but I think that this provides a safer option for girls and then just, yeah, an opportunity to like. Be competitive at the same level. And yeah, I just think it's really exciting, but I wanted to acknowledge that you can be on the football team, but yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Excited. Oh.
Do, do you, just really quick, do you feel you've gotten the direction that you need?
I think so.
You heard our words.
Thank you very much.
Just in case you need more. Sounds good.
And thank you, Vice Principal. You provide so much leadership and support for our student athletes and our students, and I want to thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you. Our next item is the approval of the Castro Valley Unified School District Transportation Three-Year Plan from 2024 to 2027.
Yeah.
So this is the presentation forward slash action item.
So we're bringing this back to you for approval. We brought this last year and this is a requirement. So we can continue to receive the reimbursement from the state. We did, I did want to note that last year when you approved it, we did receive $1.1 million in reimbursement. And this year, after approval, we will include it in the presentation. Because of the cost that we incurred last year on transportation, we are going to receive 1.3 million. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ackerman, who will go through the presentation.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm glad a few people cleared out because I'm used to an empty room over there. So I was very nervous that there were so many people still here. All right, so I'm going to start by kind of going over where we currently are with transportation in Castro Valley Unified School District. So as mandated, we provide special ed transportation for all students that qualify for transportation with their IEPs. Whether that is in-house transportation by district employees with one of our white fleet vans. Or through a third-party contractor that we utilize for the students that we're not able to transport ourselves. We also prioritize any unhoused students as defined by the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. So that's, you know, hugely important to get those kids to school that otherwise might not have the ability to make it to the campuses every day. This year, we are operating four routes for our secondary school buses. Unfortunately, we are down one route from when I was here last year. We had two drivers retire. We do have one person that came back and started driving for us. So we were able to bump it up to four rather than three. But bus driver continues to be a difficult position to recruit, not just here, that's a national problem. There's a shortage everywhere of bus drivers. But we do have two people that are currently training and we're hoping that we'll have them in place in time to start next school year. And be able to offer additional routes in addition to what we're currently offering. And then in addition to getting the kids to school every day, we work with the school sites to make sure that we're able to transport everyone on the field trips, which. The kids absolutely love, the drivers love taking them to Lawrence Hall of Science and all that fun stuff. So we do as much of that as we can in-house with our school buses. And then we assist the school sites in obtaining charter buses for anything that we're not able to do ourselves. So a few numbers of what we're transporting this year. So this year, there are 100, or sorry, 473 students receiving transportation daily. And that number includes 127 special education students. And that is split between us transporting in-house and our third-party contractor. And I believe on a slide further along in the presentation, I'll break that number down for you a little bit more. And then we have 346 kids that take the school bus to and from school every day at the secondary sites. And that includes the McKinney-Bento students. So the, the staff and the fleet that we have this year, we have four bus drivers and we, if you remember last year, that number of van drivers has increased dramatically. We've had a very good year for, for van drivers. So we do have two less bus drivers because of retirement, but we have seven more van drivers this year. Which has been huge for us being able to increase our special education transportation. So we have a fleet of six school buses. So yes, we have two buses sitting there just desperately waiting for two more drivers to come along and. Get them out on the road. And then we have 19 vans. So we do have two spare vans in case something breaks down. We need to swap those out and make sure everybody's able to get back on the road. So we always like to have a couple spares just in case something happens. So our in-house transportation, like I mentioned, 346 students that are taking the bus every day. And 72 special education students that are transported in-house. And then approximately 72 of the 125 field trips this year are being taken care of in-house. That number is going to continue to change as we get closer to the end of the year. There's a lot of field trips. A lot of requests are still coming in right now, so that number will probably increase as we get closer to the end of the year. And this year, I've been very proud of how much we've been able to take on in-house for our special ed transportation. And we are down to 55 students that are using the third-party vendor. I am a firm believer that it is in everyone's best interest for our own staff to be transporting our own students every day. And we will continue to work hard to bring that number down even lower and bring as much in-house as we possibly can. So a little bit of data for you about the breakdown of where those 346 students that take the school bus every day are coming from. So there are 45 students that are traveling to the high school. Canyon, by far the biggest at 223 students and then Creekside with 78 students. And then I've, I've broken it down, the students by area. So as you can see, the hills on the east side of town have a big ridership. As well as students coming from the west side of town all the way across to Canyon. All right, so now we move along to the plan. So step one, we're going to continue to do what we're already doing. Step two is we're going to expand this plan. And our goal is to increase our special education transportation, like I mentioned. But also to be able to, to bring in some additional bus drivers and expand the bus transportation. And in order to better serve our students, we are in the process of putting together surveys to send out. To the neighborhoods of Columbia, Briar Ridge, Independent and Vanoy. To gauge interest in transportation in those areas. To see if there are areas that are in, in need of transportation that we're not currently serving and, and come up with a way that we can better serve those areas. Always a big focus and, and it's part of the law that we're required to do this to be eligible for the reimbursement is to. Make sure that we are providing transportation to our unduplicated students. Make sure that we are ensuring that our students most in need are able to get the transportation to be at school where, where they desperately need to be. And of course, we provide transportation services at no cost to UPP students. I've heard my clicker. And I will turn it back over to Suzie to talk about some numbers.
Yes, thank you. So this is the calculation for the revenue that we will receive. So this, this is looking at prior year, our cost last year is $2.8 million. And then what the state does is it looks at actually reduced. It will be reduced by the capital outlay, which is the, the cost of the vehicles that we purchase. I guess that's not subject to the 60% reimbursement. And then from there, it's the 60% reimbursement from the, the 20, $2.8 million minus the 140. And then again, subtracting what they, we already receive as part of our local control funding formula calculation, which is an add-on. A transportation add-on that, that it's already included there. So overall, it's $1.3 million that I mentioned earlier. Again, this is higher than, than prior year by about $200,000. Because it is based on, on the actual expenditures prior year. And then, let's see. The annual, this is a three-year plan, must be approved by April 1st. And again, without the plan, we will have an audit finding, which means we need to, we must return the funds to the state. And then questions?
Before I get to questions, I know trustee Whitaker is wondering about those electric buses I talked about last year. So they are coming, they are scheduled for a late spring, early summer delivery, so they should be here in time for next school year.
How did you know?
What's the range? I'm just curious.
It's about 250 miles, so we'll, yeah, we'll definitely, we're not going to send them out on field trips, but they will be operating the normal school routes.
Any questions? Okay, so trust, Vice President Adams.
Just a quick comment. I think, you know, as a special ed teacher here, my kids were able to get transportation. And that always increased their attendance and increasing their attendance, of course, helped everything else. You know, that's the way we were able to teach them, the way we could do their social emotional needs and. And help them graduate from high school. So transportation is so important. It's, we can't do anything else really without them being there. Thank you.
Trustee Raymond.
First of all, thank you for the presentation to both of you. With respect to using third-party vendors for spud transportation. So is this still just, is this coming down the fuck? We just don't have enough people to drive vans still? That's what it is.
Yes, the, the demand is, is far greater than the need right now.
Sure, that's what we're.
Or sorry.
Got it. No, I, I follow you.
It's late, sorry.
That's okay. No, I, I follow you. I just wanted to make sure that that was still kind of where it is. Because I know that, I know that in the past, we've had to rely even more heavily on third-party drivers. And so I'm glad to see that that is decreasing over time. Hopefully, because I agree with you, I, I would really love to see that all come in-house if we can get there. So obviously, that's a, a workforce issue and hopefully we can continue to find, find some people and bring it in. And then I'm also really glad to hear that you're going to be surveying Columbia, Briar Ridge, Vanoy area. I, as a parent who lives in that area. You know, that's been a struggle, you know, for families in, in that community or in those areas to not have any sort of bus service. And over the years, I know we've had it sporadically, but it's never quite stuck. And then I guess my final question or comment would be, at what point do we start talking about elementary transportation? You know, I know we've, I know we've touched on it here and there, you know, in the time that I've been on the board and. I know for myself, I, you know, I, I, I mean, I, I feel pretty strongly that we should be working towards that somehow. I know funding is scarce. I know, you know, infrastructure is scarce. I know our drivers are scarce. But I, I would love to see us have a more robust conversation about, about that. I feel personally like it's an equity issue on top of an environmental issue and also just a logistical issue for our community. I don't know. I don't know if there's really a question there necessarily. Oh, thank you. You're welcome.
So as part of last year's plan, we did survey the families at the three Title I schools to gauge interest in elementary transportation. We only ended up with three families that took advantage of that transportation opportunity. And that's part of why we chose the neighborhoods that we did for the survey. Is those neighborhoods are not as close to their elementary schools as the rest of the elementaries are. They're, they're much more central in their neighborhoods at the other schools. So it's not just secondary transportation that we're looking at for those neighborhoods. It is elementary as well.
I so very appreciate hearing that and so I'm very glad I asked. Because that is, you know, to me, I remember when we were having that conversation, one of the thoughts I had was like. I understand why we would want to look at serving the Title I schools. That's really important. A lot of those schools are in walkable neighborhoods. You know, these neighborhoods that we're talking about tonight are really not. So it's much more difficult to say, okay, kids walk to school and, you know.
See in two weeks.
Right, exactly. And, and I will say in Columbia, the Columbia neighborhood, there is a group of parents that's organized like a walking bus to Vanoy. You know, that, that, they do that a couple of times a week. And it's, it's a lot though, you know, it's a lot and it requires parents to be available to do it and that sort of thing. And, you know, and I will also say there are a lot more young families in that area than there were when my kids were in elementary. So the need may be there. I'll be really interesting, interested in hearing the data that comes out of that survey. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Howard.
I'm actually not sure. I don't think I have a question actually, because I remember there was, there was a transportation bill in it. I thought it had some money in it at some point, but it didn't make it, did it?
Good question. I was just going to actually in response to your question about that. And Suzie, please chime, chime in. We actually only get reimbursed for the students who qualify. That's why we went to the, asked to find out. So unless they qualify, the funding that we get is based on that. That was the transportation bill. There were two transportation bills. One was you have to have transportation for everybody, but they weren't going to give us money, so that one died. This one actually said, make sure that the students who are, who qualify. And are economically disadvantaged actually have, so it only, that's, that's why we're, we have to do it that way. Otherwise, we would have to come up with the funding to do that for free for everybody.
Yes, and so the, just the, kind of going back to the presentation earlier with that slide of 2.8 million. That's the cost that we have incurred every single year. I know it's gone up from last year to this year. That's why we're, our reimbursement is, is up by $200,000. But that's always been a cost that's out of the general fund. And less fees that we collect for, for, you know, the bus passes. And so we're glad that this bill passed and we get at least 60% of, of the reimbursement. But anything that we, while we expand, it's a good thing, but at the same time, that cost is not going to be 100% covered. Right? We're still looking at the, you know, the 60% reimbursement, knowing that this bill is really, it's, it's for. is really, it's for students that do qualify. And that's why, in the plan, we have to be very specific about how we're, we are looking at offering transportation to students that are, are, that needs it the most, meaning that qualifies.
Sparking some questions here. Trustee Whitaker, and then Trustee Howard?
I was pointing at...
You're, sorry, Trustee Howard?
Well, you know, I think Sarah said she wanted us to have a discussion about these things, and I think that's a good idea, because I think we're gonna have to be very careful about this, because this is a very, you know, it'd be great to have transportation for everybody, but this is a very expensive program. And, you know, our finances, at least for next year, and maybe the year after, are not that great. So I think we could talk about it, but we need to be really careful and make sure that we're not gonna spend money we don't have.
And just a reminder from the last, last year's presentation about the cost, right, the cost of the, the bus, right, to, to, to purchase one. The, the new buses that are coming in the spring, that's all paid by the grant, but it's about, it's $550,000 for one. And that's not something that the state will reimburse us, that is going to be on the, you know, on, on the district, unrestricted general fund, where it's going to need to come from. Because that's why in the reimbursement calculation, there's actually a section that says, less capital outlay costs, because they're not looking at that as a natural reimbursement.
So the two electric buses were from a grant?
Let me just sort of build off what we've talked over here, I do have questions. I just, I know, we know, I'm probably on record as saying that it, it concerns me that, you know, kids have, families have to pay the cost for a bus pass. And I hope that we can always endeavor to ensure that we're keeping that cost as minimal as possible, and finding creative ways to help families afford it. I think we sometimes forget that middle-class families, particularly in the past few years, have faced a lot of inflation. And seeing that bill, I'll tell you, I didn't buy a bus pass this year. We made different arrangements to get to school, and I felt bad about that, but I also looked at, how long would it take my child to get to school, and to come home, and what the cost was upfront? It's a lot of money. So if we can find other ways to either reduce that cost, or find ways to help families pay for it over time, it's, oftentimes, I find in the public school environment, it's like a cliff. We subsidize those who really need it and should get that, those supports, but then, then those, those families that, it does impact their budgets, their monthly budgets, we don't have ways to support them. So I wish we could find, be creative around that, to just sort of lessen the blow that there has to be cost sharing there.
And, and that's so true for so many things, like, you qualify if you're here, and $5 more if you don't. I was gonna ask Ms. Chan, and actually, and I don't know if you have the number right off the bat, or close to it or not, but here's the piece. If it costs $2 million for us to have the transportation we have, we get 1.3, I'm just using just wrong numbers, $1 million in reimbursement, the rest of it has to come from somewhere. So some of it comes from the fees we charge, the rest of it comes from our general fund. So I don't know how much about that was maybe the last couple of years.
So with the, just looking at that example of the $2.8 million minus the fees, or, or, yes, that we collected, so we were always looking at close to the 1 point, sorry, 1.8 million, really, that is the, our contribution to the program.
To the, and some of it is for special education, the transportation we had with other, but even regular ed, it was about, like, if I remember, when you take that out, it's about like $400,000.
Yes, correct. We're not, we're not, yes, from the, the bus passes, we're not collecting enough to cover the cost for just, for just the home-to-school transportation.
Trustee Whitaker?
I just want to say, this is another example of how unfortunate it is that education isn't fully funded, to support the kid wholly.
Yep.
Like, there's pieces that are great, but we're not fully funded. And, you know, the hard choices that you have to make around the budgets, like, well, we want to do this, but we have to cut somewhere else. And so, like, that is such a polarity that you have to deal with, and it's, it's just hard decisions, and so...
It stinks.
It just, yeah.
Well, no, it stands in contrast to, like, our lunch program in California, and I will always be grateful to Senator Nancy Skinner for her advocacy in ensuring that it's fully funded now. And so, I, I'm, it's too bad that we saw the sweeping of those transportation funds, was that in the 90s? It started in the 90s, and the Great Recession basically...
It's over 30.
I think it was during the...
Transportation was funded in California.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know, I know we are an outlier, so I apologize if my comments sound like I am not grateful, but I, I appreciate that we are an outlier in actually providing these services, and that's important, and I would be really delighted to hear that we're going to do some outreach. I do have two questions. The credential to be a van driver versus a bus driver, I'm assuming there's a big delta there? What's, and is there an opportunity to just deploy more van drivers to help get our students to school?
So, yeah, there is a big difference in the qualifications. Any of us could walk in and apply and be a van driver if we have a Class C license and a clean record. So let me get you guys some vans.
That would be like the biggest liability issue, that, and it would not support...
The regulations around being a bus driver are very intense. There, there's a lot of regulation at the state level, rightfully so. You're, you're operating a huge piece of equipment filled with the schoolchildren, and, you know, I've seen in the news over the last couple of weeks, some horrific crashes in other parts of the country involving school buses, unfortunately. So there is a lot of regulation around the requirements for being a school bus driver. It's very difficult, it's a very physically demanding process to pass the testing, so that, I think, is definitely part of, of what makes it so difficult. And we, we do, we have used our, our special ed van drivers in a pinch, like, we've had a bus breakdown, and we've deployed a few vans to pick up a few kids. Luckily, we've never had one of the full buses break down and needed to do that, it's only been like 10 or 15 kids, and we've been able to do it with a couple vans. But we just, as we continue to hire new van drivers, the priority with the van drivers is the special education transportation, so there's really not going to be an opportunity to utilize them for the home-to-school transportation.
And that's because the, the cost of having it outsourced is so expensive. So, you know, cost-wise, if we're gonna actually transport more kids, it has to be special that so that we pay less to the outside vendor.
My last question, I'm curious about the conversations among, like, transportation directors in K through 12. Clearly, we know that there's a problem finding bus drivers. And I've spoken to my colleagues over at AC Transit, they're having the same problem. And now I appreciate the difference between a school bus and their buses, I'm like, that's a different thing. What are the creative solutions out there? Like, are they saying, well, maybe we shouldn't be using buses, maybe we should transport kids in different ways, maybe we should consolidate schools, have more local, like, what, what, what do they say? How do, how do we try to solve for that?
So, to be completely honest, it's more of, how the heck did you get seven bus drivers? Where did you get them from? Those, those are really the conversations that are happening. There's, yeah, so we're, you know, autonomous buses are next, I guess, that's, that'll be the, the wave of the future, maybe, I don't, I'm not sure. But yeah, it's, it's really more of a jealousy, like, where the heck did you find those bus drivers, kind of thing, when everybody gets together?
Well, and we're competing, we're competing with Apple, and Google, and Genentech, and everybody else.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, and that, and that's part of the problem, is because of the component of transporting children, somebody can go and get licensed and drive for Genentech much easier than they can get the additional certifications for a school bus. And so, somebody can go through all the same training, but then still need those additional certifications before they're qualified to drive a school bus versus any of those other buses that you see out there.
So, one comment, and then I'd like to make a motion.
Oh.
Say, one thing that won't stink is our new electric buses.
Wow.
I couldn't help it. I'd like to move approval of the Castro Valley Unified School District Transportation three-year plan from '24 to '27.
I'll second it.
Great, there's a one and a two? Let's vote.
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker, Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Vice President Adams?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, it's a six-zero, we have passed this, this three-year plan. Our next item is the personnel report, personnel report. Who wants to make a motion?
I'm of approval of the personnel report.
Who wants to make a second?
A second.
We have a one and a two, let's start voting.
Yes.
Yes, Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Vice President Adams?
Yes.
And I will say yes, five to zero. It's time for some board member comments and reports. Anything to add, student, board member?
Pops, excuse me, pops is, I believe, the week we get back, maybe the 13th?
Say that again, what, what is it?
It's the 11th, and 12th, and 13th, it's the choir performance.
Okay.
Definitely try to come, because that's like everyone's favorite event of the year.
Well, have a great spring break.
Trustee Raymond?
All right, so, not too, too much to report, I've completed my master's in governance, however.
Put her in the queue.
Was that? I know, right? And, you know, so beware, I now have a master's in governance. Let's see, last week, on Thursday night, I got to bounce between the elementary open houses at Chabot and at Proctor, and I absolutely loved going. So hopefully, everyone's going to get a chance to hit at least one open house in the next couple of weeks, it's open house season. The teachers I met with, I popped into a lot of classrooms, they were all super happy to see a board member come and see what's going on at their schools. So, yeah, I'm not sure, I know there was a lot, there were a lot of open houses on Thursday night, and so I, I know it wasn't the only one out there, but I really enjoyed it, and I'm looking forward to visiting Vanoy Open House in a couple of weeks. Then today, I attended the PSC meeting, and Ms. Rishichu gave a great, I got to hear the LCAP presentation that she's been giving to all of our school communities, and it's really great, and I, I was able to tell her this privately, but I'm gonna tell everyone publicly, it's so wonderful that you're doing this. I think it is such a great way to get our community better engaged, and any efforts we can make as a district to engage our community in these thought processes, I think is really worth the time and effort. I actually was able to have some conversation with members of my neighborhood up in Columbia, primarily parents at Vanoy, who got really freaked out that there was going to be this LCAP meeting at Vanoy, and, and they, they want to know what, what, we need, anyway, it was, I was able to sort of chat with them a little bit, though, just about what LCAP is, and now, no, if you haven't taken the survey, please do it, go to that meeting, it's a great opportunity to, like, interface a little bit with our district and get to know what we're doing, and for us to get to know what you need from us, you know? So, yeah, the outreach, I think, I think this, this step towards more outreach is just really wonderful, and I'm personally grateful, as a board member and as a parent, that that's happening. I got to see the outsiders, of course, my son was backstage, so that was particularly special for me, but I have to say, the performances were really fantastic, weren't they? Yeah, they were really good. And then, lastly, I just wanted to share, as we spoke so much about culinary arts and CVUSD today, that same son at the high school, he actually, I didn't ask him to do this, he snuck out one of the famous CVHS muffins.
Had a muffin?
I had one of the muffins, I've had the muffin. It was like the bran, it was a little chocolatey, yeah, it was quite good, yeah, I understand why you talk about them. So, the muffin, I have had it, I can confirm, delicious, good job at the high school. That's all I got.
I love that phrase.
I have not represented the district, but I look forward to seeing you all Saturday and collaborating together.
Just a couple of things here. One, I think we all got an email from F3, or one of our law firms, I don't know what it stands for, I forgot, it's three names. But at any rate, they, I did watch the webinar, and it was about board members and social media, and it's really pretty interesting. The Supreme Court actually came down nine to nothing to say that we could have a personal webpage and participate in social media, and that it's distinct, although they had some recommendations about how to deal with it, but it changed the law from what it was. But they did emphasize one other thing, and that is, the fact that we can't even like another board member's any comment on their webpage, if it has anything to do with schools. So, but if you go back through your emails, I'd really recommend listening to that, it's worth, it's worthwhile. So, the second item is, I think Parveen already mentioned it in her report, and that is, that the chamber has its Student Citizen of the Year Lunch on April 18th. I'd like to invite you all, but the room is full, because this year, we have literally all the schools in the unincorporated area, so I think it's 32 schools, so it's a pretty crowded room, but it should be a good event. Zero, one, I guess, me. And not as a board member, they're just, there literally isn't any room for us, we're really squeezed, and we're even having to put two schools at a single table this year, so it's quite a different. We do have the emcee in the room right now, though, Dustin is graciously consented to help us again.
It's Dr. Goshere.
Appreciate that. And the final thing that I will mention is that, at the Alameda County School Board Association meeting in April, the county school nurses will be presenting on the work that they do for the schools. We have two school nurses, there's about 120 or 140 school nurses in the county, and they're going to be speaking there just to reemphasize the importance of the work that they do to keep our students healthy and everything, so that's all I have. Thanks.
All righty, I have a couple of things, there was, last Thursday was too busy, too many different things to go to, and I couldn't go to all of them, so, but what I was able to go to was the Regional Policy Board, and I was able to open up that meeting, and we had a good meeting there, representatives from all of the four districts, Hayward, Castro Valley, San Leandro, and San Lorenzo. Then I also went to a PAC meeting, Parent Advisory Council, that was good, I really, this used to be kind of dull, but they're way better now, because there's always a presentation of what's happening in special ed at a specific site. And so I'm really enjoying those PAC meetings now. And then, the last thing I went to was Castro Valley Education Foundation, and I just want to keep mentioning that, you know, it's Spring for Ed, April 26, lots of fun, at 6:00 PM at the Adobe Center, and, you know, it's, you know, I just, I think my first time going was one or two years ago, and I was amazed at really how wonderful it is, and all the great people. And, you know, you get to bid on things, and on really exciting items that are there, sometimes it's art, sometimes it's like football tickets, or Warriors tickets, or something like that. And in doing that, since they were donated, you know, all of the money is going to help, this year, to help the arts. So, and there's going to be an art display from Castro Valley Unified at the same time in the building, in the Adobe Arts Center, during Spring for Ed. So that's another thing to take a look at. And that's it, just those three things.
I want to thank Trustee Howard for reminding us all, it is Happy Persian New Year, or that was, was that, was that like last, last week?
Thank you.
What year is it? Is it, is it just...
It's actually the equinox, so the first minute of spring, so it was 8:05 PM on Tuesday.
Excellent, so Happy New Year.
Yeah.
I haven't done anything on behalf of the board, I did leave town, as I shared, my grandmother passed away, and, you know, getting back to Central Florida was very healing, honestly, it's been a rough few years for my family, and it, I, just being with family sometimes is a very helpful thing, and playing with donkeys and cows on my uncle's farm, and also drinking some peach wine. And playing with donkeys and, and cows on my uncle's farm and also drinking some peach wine. So I, I'm, we'll be gathering later for a funeral for her in, in North Carolina. But I just want to challenge this all, you know, a few years ago, when we saw racist incidents in our, our, our district, we stood up. We said that we, we believe in something. And I, I know the hard work that happens here. And there's a lot of things we can't talk about and we will never talk about. But I know that we have the, the will and the way and that, and the belief, this, this district has the heart to support all of our students, teachers, and our families in this community. And I know that this team is going to lead us forward. So I want to just wish you all a fantastic spring break. And thank everyone for all the great updates tonight. And I'm going to say this meeting is adjourned.